All right, this time I'd like to reconvene the meeting. Pledge of the Aegis.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, this time I'd like to Dr. Calvin to introduce our new Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Dan, if you want to come over to the table.
Sure.
Thank you. I would like to welcome tonight Mr. Daniel Vitor. Dan is currently Director of Finance and Technology at Marion Central Schools. He's a Webster, a New York resident. He is responsible for budget development, financial forecasting, strategic planning, management of personnel over at Marion. Daniel is also a bit of a real technology guru. He launched a technological device initiative, solar grid installation project at Marion, and created a digitized procurement process, implementing and also implemented a new human resource portal over at Marion. He is currently pursuing his doctorate degree in his spare time at the University of Rochester. He is just about a semester away from completing and completing his dissertation, and he's earned a Certificate of Advanced Study in School Business from SUNY College at Brockport. He received his Master's of Business Administrative Degree as well from the Rochester Institute of Technology, and we just wanted to welcome him here tonight as the new Assistant Superintendent for Business. And over the next couple of months, Dan will be working very closely to make a smooth transition for the district in terms of evaluations. So if we could just give him a round of applause. Dan, if you want to say hi, anything I forgot you want to share, certainly.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much for the welcome, everybody. Very excited about joining the team here. Come to know Wayne as really kind of a beacon of academic achievement in the region, so I'm excited to get in here and really contribute and add some value for this community. Thank you for the welcome.
So if we're all set with Dan, then Dan, I'm going to let you go home.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your meeting.
All right, we begin our meeting by amending the agenda. We need to amend the agenda to add a bath entry to the personnel action, and we need to separate the vote around here because Carrie listed on there, so that'll be in our board action. Okay? I need a motion to approve the amended agenda. Carla, second. Steve, any discussion? All in favor? Any votes? Thank you. All right. Move on. Public comment reminder: This is a meeting in public. Helped according to the open meetings law is not a public participation meeting. As a board, we value inputs from the public. In order to address your comments, questions more efficiently, we would encourage you to use the district's protocol for resolving concerns instead of waiting for a Board of Education meeting. I will call for speakers who have signed up to speak. Each speaker will be given up to three minutes to talk. All speakers must adhere to this timeframe. At the three-minute mark, we will politely thank you for your comments. Speakers cannot defer their time slots to another person. Also, speakers are asked to refrain from discussing matters that involve district personnel and/or a particular student's record. School staff and students should not be named during public comment. Speakers are also asked to avoid repetitive comments. All remarks should be addressed to the Board of Education directly. Community members are able to ask board members questions. However, community members should know that the board member will not engage in conversation or answer questions during this portion of the meeting. The Board of Education will respond to the questions in one of three ways: on its web page, directly to individuals through a phone call or written letter, or to the public in future meetings. A copy of all written correspondence should be given to the board clerk before the end of the meeting today. After I've called on those who have signed up to speak, please come to the table with a microphone and state your name and address with the board clerk's record. Okay, at this time, would we have Debbie Everett, please, come up?
Need name and address, I assume?
Uh-huh. Maybe she forgot.
Deb Hibbert, 7341 Lakeside Road. I apologize for my voice, I'm coming down with something. In light of several recent events, I have some serious concerns about the safety of our students and staff in this district. I had heard from several employees regarding the BB gun incident a few days before the last board meeting. I attended it with the hopes that some sort of statement would be shared, and it wasn't. The next day, the incident blew up on social media and local TV stations covered it. I'd like specific answers to the following questions, which I will submit to the board clerk. What do the procedures call for when a weapon is reported and/or found on school property? I do not understand why a shelter in place or a lockdown did not occur. I have been told that this decision came from the district office and not from the building administrators. If your answer is yes, the district followed the written and board-approved procedures, then those procedures need to be changed immediately. The decision that all is safe and everyone should go on with their day is not the decision any district official should be making. That should be up to law enforcement. Some of you have military and law enforcement backgrounds, it should know this to be true. Think of the Titanic. That non-functioning BB gun could have been the tip of the iceberg. If the answer to this question is no, our procedures were not followed, then I'd like to know why, and as the person who was responsible for not following the procedures, be disciplined. Do your procedures include notifying parents of the situation promptly? An email being sent a week later after news reports is not prompt? I know of at least four other incidents in which law enforcement has been called. The most serious was the recent threat we received an email about. The threat was written, specific, and thought out. These incidents, in just the first six weeks of school, should be extremely alarming to you as they are to me and countless others. The area you need to consider, another area you need to consider is the mental health of our students. Ask any teacher and they will tell you that many kids need help. Last year, included in the cuts, we lost a counselor. I spoke with one of you, and out of respect, I will not say who it was, and I was told, "Deb, we are way above state compliance when considering number of students per counselor." And that was the justification. In addition, consider that with the new schedules, teachers have less face time with their students, making it harder to form a connection with at-risk students. State Ed may tell you the minimum ratio for students per counselor, but we all know that New York State can be clueless with its mandates and recommendations. Kindergarten is not mandated, but we do it because it's the right thing to do. The right thing to do with regards to mental health is to consider more supports, possibly by adding counselors, social workers, or psychologists. My thoughts are my own, but have been influenced by dozens who work and live here. I clearly recognize that my statement tonight may put a target on my back as an employee with this district. Please know that I sit here tonight not as a disgruntled employee or a former board member with an axe to grind. I'm a graduate, a lifelong resident, a mom, a bus driver, a taxpayer, and someone who cares very deeply. Thank you.
Dennis Landry, 365 Jacobs Road, Walworth, New York. First, I'd like to say that I did contact a board member before, and I received no response on this. And I also waited for the board meeting to see if there'd be any response. There wasn't. There was no response until after it blew up on social media. So I'm here tonight in concern of the issue with the gun found in the student locker. While the outcome was positive, there are concerns that led up to this event. Not locking the school down was in direct violation of New York State school law. I am asking that a formal investigation into this matter as to why the law was not followed, and the person making the decision is not only held responsible for breaking the law, but the school board should also request that person's resignation. This is not the first time our children's safety has been put at risk. Last year, there was the gas incident. I ask the board to please take the appropriate action before we have an unfavorable outcome in the safety of our students. Just as a student was held responsible for their actions, so should the person not following the law be held responsible. Furthermore, the event that happened last Friday only reinforces the reason the school should have been locked down. Thank you.
All right, this time move on to board member comments. Any board members who'd like to make a comment? Ron Kim?
First, let me give you an update on some things that are going on at Fort County. At this time, Fort County is starting the process of investigating whether or not we can make dues to Fort County via COSER, which would help to subsidize those dues. The second thing is that Fort County has committed to doing a, having a professional audit come in to audit our financial resources. And it does look as if we are going to hire an outside person to help with selecting the next director of the Fort County Association. Sharon is slated to retire in January, and it looks like they're going to go outside. The second thing I would like to do is announce that one of the, I think one of the great traditions at Wayne is to have student athletes select a teacher to be recognized at their senior night. Recently, the football team and the cheerleaders had their senior nights, and the following teachers were selected because of the special connection they've had with students. Mr. Stephen Howt was selected by three students, Mrs. Streeter. Mr. Cox was selected by two students. Mr. Briggs was selected by two students. Mr. Pullman was selected by one student. Mr. Lucino was selected by one student. Mrs. Doran by one student. Mrs., Mr. Moran by one student, and Mrs. Schwartz by one student. Jackie Courtney, Ryan Van Allen, Nolan Flores, Brittany Quincy, Ryan Wheaton, Kristen Tosconal, and Denise Ledman, who happens to be a teacher for the cosmetology program, our BOCS program. All those were teachers who were selected by our seniors to be recognized at senior nights recently. So my congratulations to them on making that special connection with students. We who have been involved in education know that often the determining factor in how well kids do in school is the connection they make with teachers, not necessarily class size, not necessarily their economic background, but that special connection. And so I salute those teachers for making that special connection. The last thing I want to talk about is that recently, the American Business Council came out with the 100 largest metropolitan areas in the United States, and then they ranked those areas for their economic climate. Surprisingly, Rochester did not rank well. We ranked 82nd out of 100 metropolitan areas in the United States for economic climate. We know that we have some economic issues based upon the studies that were done for this Board of Education by Dr. Sbersky. So it doesn't look like the economic climate is going to change quickly in this area. So it's something that we need to be cognizant of. Then also, Business First came out with school spending on a per pupil basis, and so I looked up the rank of Wayne Central and our neighbors. Now, in the state, the average per pupil spending in the state is $23,361. Our neighbors, Pellmac was $18,600, Webster was $18,600, Williamson, I'm rounding off a couple of dollars here and there. Williamson was 19,4, Fairport was 22, Penfield was $20,400, Wayne was $20,900, Gananda was $20,972, and Marion was $24,808. As I looked over the ranks for all 60-some districts in the Rochester area, two things struck me. Size matters, because if you're fielding a football team and you divide that football team, the cost of that football team by 2,000 students, that's substantially different than if you divide that cost by 4,000 students, like a, like a football. The other thing that really matters is the percentage of handicapped students that your district is servicing. We know that over the last couple of years, we've had a pretty good size increase of students needing special services moving in. That's influenced our cost. The highest per pupil cost I could find in the Rochester area also happens to be the school district with the highest percentage of special needs students in the Rochester area. I don't want to necessarily identify that district. But as we look at our budget, as we look at costs going forward, I think those are two things we need to keep in mind: the size of the district and our specialty population. So thank you.
My turn. Anyone else? Karen?
Couple items. The Fort County Legislative Committee met this past weekend. I unfortunately wasn't able to attend, but they're meeting again in November 18th at 8:00 AM in Newark to continue working on the legislative papers that will be due. I also had the opportunity to attend both Halloween events sponsored by the Walworth Parks and Recreation and the Ontario Parks and Recreation, and just a big thanks to both of those groups because they really, really came out and did a fantastic job. It's a great opportunity for community. There was a lot of students there, a lot of our parents who volunteer in there. They just did a really, really great job. So that was really nice. Just a reminder, if any of you are interested, this Tuesday morning, I believe it's 9:50, the Halloween Parade is at the primary and elementary schools. So the weather's nice, and you want to come, it's at 9:50 in the morning. And then for anybody in the community here tonight, too, Saturday from 3:00 to 6:00, there is a trunk-or-treat event, which basically is for anybody in the community. If you want to bring your kids in costume, they can decorate, they can walk around living words, churches, parking lot, and trick-or-treat out of cars. There's bounce houses, food trucks, and games for the kids. So students were able to get those postcards at home, but it's a free event with the exception of the food trucks, if anybody wants to go. So, that's all. Thanks.
Carla?
I just have a couple things. I neglected at the last meeting to say something, but I wanted to give a shout-out to the folks who did the soccer alumni.
Selection.
Yes, the Hall of Fame selection. And I was, you know, I went to school, a couple of those people that were inducted, and it was just nice to see them be recognized. And I also want to give a big shout-out to our cheerleaders, who again won the, for the second year, I think, the Finger Lakes Championship, and they all looked adorable in their picture, and represented Wayne Central very well. And I've also been in and out of the stores and in and around town, and I run across a couple of the students from the high school here who I just happened to put my nose in and say, "Hey, where do you go to school?" And they say, "Wayne." And I said, "Oh, what do you think of things this year?" And they said, "Oh, things are going well." And I said, "Well, can you elaborate a little? Do you like the schedule?" And every single kid that I asked said they really liked the new change to the schedule. They picked, some kids, one kid had picked up a new class, other kids just happy with the change and flexibility that the new schedule's giving them. So it's nice to hear that that young lady that spoke at our last meeting is also being collaborated again with the kids liking this schedule. So, and I also want to thank the district for supporting some of us to go to the NISPA Conference last weekend, and we got some good information. And this is the Director, Superintendent for Commissioner of Education, Mrs. Mary Allen Elyough spoke there, and also a couple other very distinguished speakers. The workshops were very good, and it was just a really nice way to spend a couple days with other board members at this time of year. So I want to thank the district for supporting us in this. That's it.
All right, this time we'll move on to our superintendent's board.
So I want to first start talking a little bit about safety and security in the district. And after I finish that, I want to talk a little bit about some of the things that are going on with our students. We have a couple of things tonight that we'll kind of go through. So as you heard tonight, recently, as you all are aware, we had some concerns that have occurred at the middle school. We had three, I know of three isolated incidences that have occurred. One involved a non-operational BB gun, which was not loaded, it had no CO2 cartridge. And I want to make sure that we're clear about that, because we've had some public members, community members, who have asked me, "What was it loaded with? When was it loaded?" Want to be clear, the item was broken, it was not loaded, and it did not have any CO2 cartridge in it. We had a young man who brought this item into the building, really didn't recognize that what he was doing was inappropriate. And we do have kids who bring a variety of items sometimes. Unfortunately, Wayne is not immune to this happening. We have kids who bring in items that are inappropriate for school. I would say to any school in our region, any school near us, around us, around the world, every day we have kids who bring in items, whether they are operational or not, that are not supposed to be in school, and that could be considered to be inappropriate and weapons in a, period. The second issue involved an elementary student who had a pocket knife with him that he normally used for Boy Scouts kinds of things, and he came with his parent to an after-school sporting event and was on the playground at the middle school with this item that could be considered to be a weapon. And we do have here, again, not separate, not different from any other school district, we have sometimes children who bring items with them, whether they came from Boy Scouts or away from Boy Scouts or just had it in their pocket. Sometimes kids bring things that they're not supposed to bring, that are inappropriate to be in a school setting. So that's the second issue. The third issue involved a student who made an implied threat recently in our school, in one of our schools. Now, we, again, not immune, we have students sometimes who say things and make comments that are completely inappropriate, that are not appropriate for the settings, period, school out of school, and sometimes those things do occur. So after, really, the first incident, there were some concerns that we heard about from people in our community. Now first, let me set the record straight. I was not at the building when the issue occurred, and I did not tell anyone how or what to do in terms of the procedure. I learned about the incident after it occurred. That is untrue. The second thing, just to be clear, I heard, we have investigated, I've heard a lot about the issue, we've looked very thoroughly at what occurred and what happened. And what we've learned is a couple of things. So we know that we have some people who are concerned about the lack of notification. What we heard loud and clear is, you know, whether it's a broken or not-broken item or gun or whatever it is, can you tell us about it, basically? And we learned that there was some information that was shared on Facebook. The information said that I personally spoke with a parent from the community and had basically kind of made some comments. Completely false, untrue. I never spoke to a parent from the community. Now, I have heard that we have a staff member who may have spoken to a public person who called my office, but I never did that. That is completely false. There is no cover-up there, there is no cover-up from the issue that happened last year with gas in the school. We gave a public discourse around that, and video is there for anyone to watch and see. The reason, why did, why did we not go out and share this readily? So typically in schools, again, we have kids who bring in items that are inappropriate. And we really assess the imminent danger, the threat that is in place. In this case, we had a child who brought in an item that was broken, it wasn't loaded, it had no CO2 cartridge. And so after, and the matter, by the way, was resolved, from what we know, really within minutes, not even a minute. Once the administrators learned what was going on, the issue was right away taken care of. Once they learned what they were looking for, quickly they found it and they took care of the matter. And so really, when there is imminent danger, we do, if there's any implied or imminent danger, we go out and we share with people what's going on. So we kind of treated this similar to what we do with other items that come into school. We have, sometimes, like all schools, kids will bring in things that are just inappropriate. Sometimes kids will bring in pocket knives. Sometimes kids will bring in items from home that could be considered to be a weapon. And we look to see what is the imminent danger. We had, when I taught, we had a young lady who brought into my classroom a knife from the kitchen, and she wanted to cut her sandwich at lunch, and didn't recognize what she was doing. It was wrong, it was inappropriate, it wasn't the right thing to do, and that matter was handled. In this case, we had a young man who brought in, again, and I want to be clear, it was a broken BB gun that had no BBs in it, that had no CO2 cartridge. And once we heard what the item was that we were looking for, immediately that item was looked for, found, and it literally was within minutes. Now, one of the things that I have really taken into effect, we, one of the items that I have taken into consideration is that honestly, I understand the concerns from our community around wanting to know if there is anything that resembles a gun. So I'm a parent, I have a child who is still in school, I have three children who are in school, and I totally, totally understand, especially in the time that we're in right now with Las Vegas, how important it is to be careful with guns in schools. And nothing is more important to me, and I think all of our administrators and our staff, than the health and the safety of our students. So let me be clear, and I want to make sure everybody hears me say this, if there is any, anything in the future, I've heard the community loud and clear, is there anything in the future that has to do with danger or here?
Can we please not make comments in the back? It's very disruptive to speakers. If not, we'll have to be removed. Thank you.
There's, I'm sorry. If there's anything that involves a gun, I can assure our community that I will share that with our community. So we heard some people say to us, "We're losing trust, Dr. Calvin." You know, we want to be able to believe that you'll tell us right away. The best way to build trust is to say you're going to do something and then to do it. And I make a promise that if we have any gun, whether it's loaded, not loaded, whether it's broken, not broken, right, I will share that with our community right away. And certainly, you know, we will continue to make sure that if there's also any imminent danger, that we let people know those things. Now, I also heard this evening that there was some law that was broken. I know of no law, I have spoken with our attorney around this, so I'm not sure what law that is, but I can tell you that we do believe and we know that we have followed the law where this is concerned. I also heard questions from the community about whether or not we report things to SED, and is that why we didn't do things in lockdown? We have a report, every district has a report at the end of the year that is given to State Ed. It is called a VEDAR report. The report is submitted at the end of the year, and every district, if there's any weapon that comes in, if there's any suspension, if kids are, you know, out of school or in school, we always report that information. We have always done that, and we always will. That, that just, there is no, "We're not going to report information, and that's why we didn't do the lockdown." That is just untrue. That's not true. In terms of precautions, again, I want to help our community to understand that we have reviewed the situation at our administrative level, we've looked at it from beginning to end, when it started to how it ended. And every situation is a learning opportunity, right? We want to make sure that no matter what, we ensure the health and safety of all kids. We've reviewed our protocols and provided training where necessary for staff. We've talked to staff that are involved to make sure that in the future, we can continue to get better at these types of things. We've reviewed our protocols and our expectations with our students and with our parents. So just two weeks ago, after this happened, we spent a full day, and we asked our principals to go on and make announcements, we had teachers, some of our teachers also working with our kids, we sent letters out to our parents, we talked to kids, and said what we shared what our expectations were, to make sure that we went over what the expectations were. We reviewed our school safety procedures, especially in the middle school. On October 4th, during a staff meeting, we had another conversation with our staff around protocols. And then we reposted also information so that our students could report information, particularly at our middle school, high school, but at any school. So around our, we have always had a hotline. And one of the things, let me just share, that's been great, is that in all of these issues, our students have been, if they see something, they're saying something. And we've had kids who really shared with us what was happening. We appreciate those students. And, and we continue to thank them, and we'll continue to work with our students around reporting if they see something that might be different. This is a sample of the poster that we have with our school. This is a sample of the poster that we have with our school hotline. So if, if kids see anything or hear anything, this number is also always been posted on our webpage. You can go on and see that. But this, we've gone around, we've reposted again. Just kind of put it up this way so people can see it. For folks, so our, so our kids, if they see anything, we, we're asking them to please post there or please call that number and share if there's anything there. So we have, we posted that information. I, I also want to talk a little bit about a couple of other things before I kind of get there to this screen here. We had some people ask us, have we, you know, does the school have safety procedures in place? All of our school buildings do have safety procedures in place. Every, and this, this is a pack of all four of the buildings, safety protocols. These items, by law, we, we do not go out and share because they involve the protocols for safety for all schools. And if you put that information out when you're trying to keep a place secure, you place your community at risk. Every year by October fifteenth, every school is required to update these if need be or to at least have them in place. We do have ours in place. So that we do. We do also have procedures that we have trained our staff and I see some of our staff here. First day of school, we talk about lockdown, fire, evacuate, shelter in place, hold in place. Our teachers have these around their rooms, they're on their doors. I actually went through the middle school to do a spot check. I went to nine classrooms myself, in addition to have other staff. And I asked staff members, did you receive training on the first day around these procedures? And they all shared yes. Can you show me where your piece is like this? And all of the teachers had these in their door, on their doors. There's a little folder on their walls. They could point to it right away and show me. In addition to this, we also do training with staff around student, uh, mental health as well. And the mental health piece is also signed off with our staff. So we do train our staff with that. And I think our staff does one great job around this as well. Can we continue to grow? We most certainly can. We also have protocol, protocols that we go through in terms of how we communicate. We have structures for security. So this is a document board, not more than a year and a half ago. This document is blue and yellow. We shared this document which shares our security structures for the district with all of you. And again, because it involves security, we don't tell, we don't go out and publicize. No district does that. Because if someone is trying to harm, we don't want the public to see what our plans are. But we do have a full security structure that is in place in our district. And in every school, we have emergency finders with every administrator, every building leader that has their school safety plans in them. So we do take the security, the health and the safety of all of our students to heart. And it is the most important thing. We want every kid to always, every child to be safe at school. We had some people also asked us, well, how come? I want to know what's going to happen to the kid, the child or the children, excuse me, that are involved. We want to know what, where, how, who, what, what's going to happen in terms of disciplinary pieces. So one of the things that people need to know is that by law, we are not allowed to discuss the disciplinary records of a student in the public domain. It is not, Dr. Calvin, just trying to not share information. I, I would love to share everything that I could, but I can't on some areas. We can't. Even the child who may do something wrong from time to time, also that they and their parents do have rights. And so that is why we will not be able to share the full disciplinary record of students, okay? That's why people know that. And again, let me just end this by saying the safety of our students and our staff, it is our number one priority. And we will continue to monitor the district closely. These, again, issues happen in every school district. Sometimes, you know, we have kids who bring in things they shouldn't and kids who behave in ways that they should not. And when we have those issues that occur, we work with our students, we work with our families and we do everything we can to support. I also heard tonight a question about mental health. And I would like to remind the board and the community that just two weeks ago, we shared about the newest partnership that is coming to our district. In all of our buildings, we are now going to be working with Wayne County Mental Health. And we shared all of the clinics that are going to be placed in all of our schools that will be manned by counselors who can now support mental health supports right here in our district. Rather than kids having to drive all the way to Lyons and families, the mental health supports are right here. So anyone who didn't see it, you can look on video and watch the full presentation from me and the director of mental health who came. And I'm sure all the board remembers that. So you can see that we are very concerned about our students and we want to make sure that we can help. And this is, this is a great time because we have now clinics that will actually be in, in our buildings, which is wonderful. At least three, if not four of our buildings will have an actual clinic there. A person who can help and support kids at any time throughout the day, after hours, before hours, during hours, and their families. So I just wanted to kind of share that tonight. Yes, please.
Do we have a timeline yet is when they're going to be in? Cause I know when they spoke, they said they had to get building approval.
Yep. They were here a, a week and a half ago. So they have to take pictures of the sites and send information out to the state. And those approvals, from what I'm told, have been actually moving at a pretty fast pace. So we are hoping that before we go for the Thanksgiving break, if possible by the second week in November, that we would have that approval and be able to start that support. We have currently in our district over three hundred children who already are receiving some form of support from that particular agency. Many of these parents actually go all the way to Lyons and they're, they're already receiving those supports. So we have things in place now, but certainly it'll be even better, we hope, when they actually come on the campuses. So very shortly, we hope before Thanksgiving, to be, to open up all of those clinics and provide those supports for people. For our kids. All right. Board, do you have any questions on any of that at all? Okay. So now I want to switch gears if we can and talk a little bit about our students. We've had some really exciting things happen across the district over the last couple of weeks. We recently had our grandparents' day at W P. Nearly a thousand grandparents came to the school over three days. And grand, we had some grandparents come as far as Tennessee to come and see their grandchildren. And it was really a fantastic group of days. We want to thank the staff at W P for the wonderful job. And, and particularly, I want to also point out our music teacher who is there at the school, who, who really, the kids just did a fantastic job singing to the grandparents. It was wonderful. And our transportation group that did a nice job and Living Word Church who also gave us the parking space to assist, it was a really great event. So we just thank everyone for all of their hard work. Great job to the staff of W P. Red Ribbon Week is this week. At the middle school and the high school, students visited primary and elementary students to talk about making healthy choices. We had a wonderful speaker in with our students at the beginning of the week and we're continuing to work through, talking to our kids about making good choices, avoiding drugs and, and how to get supports if there are supports that are needed. As was said earlier tonight, next week, we'll have our Halloween Parade, October thirty-first, for our elementary students and primary students. And just as a, a little quick heads up, just so the board knows, on November ninth, Senator, excuse me, Senator Helmings and Representative Bob Oaks will be here, they're going to hold a public meeting in the PAC. And what they're going to do is talk about the lake levels issue. So it's really just a, they asked for space. And if any of our community or board members are interested, certainly that, that opportunity will be there. Also want to mention that on October twenty-seventh, this Friday, at seven P M. in the high school, we'll have this year's Select Chorus and Show Choir Cabaret Presentation. It should be a great night of singing and dancing. And this is certainly, we've posted this on our Facebook. It's out on our website, so we're just really excited about this activity as well. It's a great night. The kids do a fantastic job. We have five Wayne Central Chorus students who also were accepted into the All Eastern High School Honor Choir. We congratulate Brianna, Megan, Riley, Paige and Dominique, Dominique rather, for being accepted. Congratulations. And they will be traveling to Pittsburgh in early March for this prestigious event. So really excited about the work that they, that they are doing. All right. And tomorrow, we have our superintendent's conference day board. The focus will be on technology integration. We'll be working with staff around our new reading and math programs. We'll be also doing some workshops around supporting students with academic intervention. And then there'll be some speakers on trauma-sensitive schools and try, trying to really again, support our students. Those who have mental health concerns will also, supports will be in place to, and, and discussions and professional development around those concerns as well on tomorrow. Those are just a couple of the topics. We have a number of other topics as well. Just to let you know, we also had our transition, transition team meeting this week. We had our first, a, a group of subcommittee meetings. We are meeting as a full group on November the sixth here in the Board of Education room. And we'll be bringing all of our transition team members back together to discuss our year and where we're at and next steps. The Parents Subcommittee met this past Monday. And some of the topics, we had a number of topics on our, on our discussion agenda. But some included lunches. We talked a little bit about our scheduling for lunches and what's happening. We talked about transportation, security in our schools, clubs and how kids can access those clubs. And just a couple of the topics that we did talk about. So we'll be back with the full team November sixth and we'll be having a beginning meeting and then breaking into subcommittees and talking about how do we continue to move forward as a district. Our strategic planning team is also going to be reconvening. We certainly want to make sure we keep our eye on the strategic planning items. We are scheduled to meet on November the third from eight until eleven A M. That meeting will also take place here in the Board of Education room. Subcommittees, subcommittees will also be meeting. The focus on the day will really be on our priorities. Our immediate priorities, our priorities, secondary priority list, and then our foundational priorities. And just as a reminder, we did place on the table, board tonight, a copy of the strategic plan. And if any of our public are looking for the strategic plan, then this is placed on our webpage. And just, you know, in terms of the top immediate priorities that we'll be looking at, the first is to develop and implement a plan to provide supportive structures and resources to improve the achievement of our kids who are from economically disadvantaged backgrounds or, and our students with disabilities. The second priority, immediate priority is to make sure that we collaborate to create, align and implement consistent district-wide curriculum that is aligned with twenty-first century skills. Our third priority is to develop a vision and long-term plan to upgrade our facilities to meet on the twenty-first century, our twenty-first century learner needs and the community needs. And then our, our fourth is to implement the district's comprehensive instructional technology plan, including the K through twelve scope and sequence. Now, there are other priorities, secondary priorities and foundational strategies that we'll also continue to look at and we, I won't read all those tonight, but just wanted to make sure I remind the board of the priorities that we'll be looking at when we come back with the strategic planning team. And then we also have some work that will start moving on now around capital improvement. So as you saw, one of the immediate priorities that we looked at is the need to start to look at capital improvements across the district. We do have items that we are aware of that have been identified in the building condition survey that we really need to address. Just a reminder, even starting to do the process now with a capital improvement plan would mean it takes two to three years before we even get the work started. So we want to get rolling on some things. Our goal is to resolve concerns in, in, in a project that were identified in the building condition survey. We're, this is not really, we're not thinking of a big bells and whistle project. This is really, let's get some things really resolved that need to be resolved to ensure the health and safety of our kids. And if there's some minor renovations that need to be made in buildings, we want to kind of work through those as well. What we're trying to do is create a plan board that has a zero tax impact for our taxpayers. And we believe that we'll be able to accomplish that this year. And then the time, again, we want to try to get moving because we've got a two to three-year piece that we need to think about before most of the work could even begin and the aid begins to start. And, and we also want to make sure as we do this project that we consider the aid flow. We are doing pretty good right now at about a seventy percent plus rate of aid flow. And we certainly want to capitalize upon that while the time is good. We don't want to give that flow of aid to somebody else. We want to make sure that we keep it in our district and that we get things done that we need to get done. So we'd like to begin this work. We're looking to gather a community group. And so we have some people who are on our strategic planning team that will be joining that. We have community members. I know that there were two, or there are three board members, Steve, Pam and Tim, who will be on that team. And we have some teachers for each of our building that we've asked to join us. We have some parents as well. And our first big meeting will be October thirtieth. That meeting will just be to sit down and prioritize and look at what needs to be done based on our building condition survey and we'll kind of go from there. More information as we move forward will be forthcoming to the Board of Education and our public. Okay? Any questions? I'm, I know I'm covering a lot. Everybody okay? All right. All right. And Greg, if you could just join me for a moment, please? And then Board, my last piece here that I want to just go over with you very quickly is we do have our two thousand eighteen, nineteen budget calendar that we have placed in front of you. And we do want to start getting going, getting going on the work while Greg is still here with us. We have a number of things that we want to kind of get accomplished this year. This year's calendar is starting a little bit earlier because we have Greg who's going to be leaving us and Dan's going to be joining us. And so we just front-loaded a couple of things. Basically, the discussions that happen at the administrative level, we want to start those conversations earlier so we can get those pieces of information done before Greg departs from being with us. And then we want to get out and get our community survey done a little bit earlier than what we've done. Normally we wait till, you know, until around, oh, after the Christmas holidays and, and really, it, it sometimes gets a little bit later, but we want to try to get it if we can. We'll, we'll give people over the December to January time to get that information back to us. So we are just, just trying to get some things done a little bit earlier. And our goal is really just to ensure a smooth process while we are transitioning. Any questions or any concerns, Greg? Did I miss anything that you wanted to?
No, I, you know, if, if Board members, I know this was sent out to you earlier this week. It pretty much follows the flow that we've had the last few years. We've kind of gone to, instead of presenting the three separate parts, we present everything at one time. The Board will get the full presentation in early March. There's the second March meeting for any discussion and then looking for budget adoption. The first meeting in April, which I think this year is April twelfth. You know, as the superintendent said, we're starting a little bit early because of the transition, but you know, I've already started working on things and, you know, I think we're fortunate that Dan and I will have time. There'll be some overlap time, so I'll be able to bring Dan up to speed. I don't think we'll be able to have everything done because some of the information comes after I leave, but I think the district will be in fine hands with Dan and, you know, we'll get a jumpstart on this, so. And we'd be happy to answer any questions, but it's, it's pretty similar to what you've seen in the past.
Any questions around the calendar? Or are you, are you all okay with the calendar? Okay. Right. And the calendar is, is a work of art, so if you ever need more information or you need to put in extra dates or whatever, we certainly are, are able to do that for you.
And Greg, when are you done?
My last day is December thirty-first.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right. I'm going to move over now. We have a, a couple of people from our community who have recently approached me and shared with me that they would like to re-establish really a wonderful opportunity that the district had not too long ago in place. And that's the Wayne Central Education Foundation, uh, Foundation. Many schools have foundations. The purpose is really to support our classroom teachers with special projects that they might like to do in their classrooms. And so tonight we have Beth Jacobson, Christine Ledestro and Stephen Ledestro. And we're going to have them kind of come on up and share. I'll move out of the way. I'll give them my chair.
I think we just.
Just two, okay.
Yes. Take your chair. I'm not sure if, there it is.
Oh, there is our PowerPoint. All right. We've decided to reconstitute the Wayne Central Education Foundation that was started in two thousand and six. We're in the early stages of getting officers, getting the five oh one C established, looking for board members and, and, and opening up to the general public and telling who we are and what we're planned to do.
I don't know.
And this is our basic mission statement. And this is our basic mission statement, uh, and we want to provide, we don't wanna supplant any group. We, we're here to support the teachers and their education of the, of the children. Say a teacher needs, uh, stuff that's outside of the budget, they would come to us, propose a grant, and it would be, uh, submitted blindly, the board would review it, and then we would allocate funds for that.
Sure to clarify your board.
Our board, yes.
The our board.
This, this organization would operate as a nonprofit, which is, um, separate and distinct from the, this whole entity.
So, uh, like I said, we're, we're looking, we're here to, you know, introduce ourselves to the community and open up and, you know, let people know who we are and, and get more people involved. It's open to teachers, retirees, anybody who lives within district. And, uh, we meet at the, uh, the Lyons National Bank in their little conference room once a month.
Um, November fourteenth is our next meeting.
Yes. So we're really in the early stages of this, so we just wanted to, you know, present ourselves to the board and present ourselves to the community of what, what we're planning on
Ultimately, we would have, um, seven directors on our board, um, and we would ask that we could have, um, some time with the, the teachers so that we could reduce ourselves, and hopefully they would, um, ultimately like to submit grants on an ongoing basis, um, for which the, the funding and the, um, contributions that we will seek from the community would
We would, uh, plan to hold fundraisers throughout the year to, to gather the funds and use them to support the teachers in their goals to educate our children. Did you hear that?
Some of the examples that have been, um, you know, that other districts have used in their, their foundation goals, um, they've awarded funds for things such as musical instruments or, um, science experiment things that, that really don't fall within the criteria of the school district budget to kinda supplement, um, the learning process, but also I've seen some articles that have, um, used foundation money to kinda use as a test box, um, in a smaller group setting that might be rolled out to, um, you know, a larger group within a certain, um, class size.
And it, this is, this is a trend that's going around the country. Other districts in our area have one. Palma has had one for years. Uh, in fact, their teachers, um, out of their paycheck, do donate a little bit towards the fund, something we're, we're talking about maybe in the future of doing if we, you know, we can get that aligned. Uh, but we also would have fundraisers to support us, to, um, present that. Also, be open to some students who had, uh, needs such as, uh, you know, you know, traveling abroad for education or something like that. If they presented a grant, we might be able to help them with those things.
I, I think the idea is to be creative ultimately, just, um, perceive those creative proposals, um, but also to kinda have, um, some sightline into the, some of the district goals, um, whether it be STEM or something of that nature, but to kinda support, um, some of those initiatives too.
And these are our next meeting dates up on the board. Uh, we hope that, uh, the community will, uh, welcome us and join us in our efforts. Thank you.
Can you guys just, um, give a little bit of who you are? Because not everybody may know who you both are. And what happened? You said it was originally in two thousand and six. Was it disbanded? Was there no money? Was there no personnel to run it? And that you have just decided that it's something, obviously, we can always use more money in the district, and there isn't a tree out back that we'd like, but, um, we always are grateful for whatever people can do for the district and our students. But can you just give us a little background on, on yourself and what happened to the program originally?
Oh, you can, the former president is actually here. Amy used to be the president, so you can certainly, if you need help, Amy's waving in the back saying that I can share some of that.
Um, so it was started in two thousand and six, and, um, there was some effort underway to, to really bring it from the grounds up, and, um, at some point, it, the interest kinda died off. Um, and so they had started a good chunk of, um, the required documentation to be the entity. We just have now to file the five oh one C three, which is the nonprofit status with the federal government. But, um, the Articles of Incorporation and, um, the E I N number, a lot of that work was done by the, the prior group. And the bylaws, um, I think there was just, uh, at some point, people's lives changed, those that were, that were involved, and the interests kind of died off, so.
We didn't get a lot of funding. So we, we hit the ground running in our first year. We did pretty good with fundraising, and then it kind of leveled off. And at that point, we were all ready to just do something different anyhow, so we did disband. And then leftover money that we had, we gave the scholarships to students. Thank you.
And I am, um, I am a financial controller with a nonprofit, um, in the Canadega area, and, um, I'm a community member, so.
Also a member of the school audit committee.
Audit committee, as a volunteer member, non-voting in any capacity.
And, uh, I'm Steve Ladestro, um, and I have, uh, been involved in the community with Cub Scouts, the school, friends of music, uh, and I'm a claim representative for State Farm Insurance, and, and a parent.
So Board, I, I, when, when they shared their interest to help and support our teachers in this way, I, I overwhelmed, I said, yes, that, that's wonderful. Anything to help with our teachers in our classrooms and willing to, to provide those kinds of grants, wonderful. So I just thought we'd bring it and share with you all. And I thank all of you, Mr. and Mrs. Ladestro. Okay, sorry, thank you very much, and thank you, Beth. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Have you had another district you work with, dealt with, um?
Foundations. Yes, the last district that I was in, we did have a foundation, pretty well received by our community. We had a number of people who did contribute, support, and we were able to do really, um, outside-the-box things that we, that we had not been able to support in our regular budget. So teachers would generally, uh, apply for a grant, um, and they were able to really do some neat things. So I had one teacher who did a great STEM project. Another teacher was a music teacher who wanted to really teach, uh, a whole unit on guitar, but wanted kids to really get into it. So she needed a grant to go out and to buy all the pieces, let the kids actually make their own guitars, and the tech teacher helped her to do that. Uh, the teachers created, made their own, uh, the students, excuse me, the students made their own guitars. And, um, the kids learned how to play guitar, but they were more interested because they made their own guitars. And it was just a really neat unit. Had another teacher do some really fantastic science things, uh, that was just, things that we, again, we probably would not have been able to afford, but those grants made it possible. So I've seen really great things happen for classrooms and for teachers, uh, because of foundations. So yes, it's, I've seen really great things, yes.
I'm looking at a slide with the contact. Can we give that, make sure that it's our website, please?
Absolutely. Okay, all right. Okay, so Board, in terms of board business tonight, uh, that, that is my report unless you have any other questions. Um, and in terms of board business tonight, we are looking for approval with the swim team of one with Canada, uh, the first reading of policy five six six zero for school food lunch service program. And then in terms of the consent agenda, we are looking for approval for the treasurer's report ending August thirty first, two thousand and seventeen. We do have a personnel action, um, and there was an amendment to the action at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, we have C S E, uh, C S E recommendations that need approval, um, board meeting minutes from October fifth, policy committee minutes from October fifth, two thousand and seventeen, and there is a gift that needs approval, and the final is the Bosse's Cooperative Bid Please, Piece for Batteries tonight. Any other questions, Board? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, the board will now move through the action item list and our agenda. I need a motion to approve the swim team of one, or it's also called an incomplete team because it doesn't have to be just one, if people didn't know that, you can have more than one. Looking at, so Jeremy, second, Ron, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, I need a motion to approve the first reading of policy fifty-six sixty, uh, school food service program. Steve, second, Carrie, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. And third, I have, uh, you have a motion to approve the personnel action that approves Carrie Whitman as a volunteer. Ron, second, Matt, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Thank you. All right, now we'll move through the consent agenda. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Steve, second, Carla, any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, we'll move on to committee reports. Audit committee, Matt?
Yeah, we left this evening before tonight's meeting and received our draft reports for internal audit, our risk assessment, and our external audit. Those reports should be in our board packet for next meeting if anybody wants to read them for, for accept, and that's pretty much our time of meeting.
Okay, thank you. Policy committee.
Yeah, our next meeting is November ninth at six o'clock here in the conference room.
Thanks. Wellness committee, Carla?
Um, I heard back from Tony. We have our first meeting in November, and from that day, we will set the rest of the year agenda.
All right, at this time, I don't have any comments. We'll move on and have, uh, even motion agenda executive sessions, uh, the performance of the particular staff members, matters involved, security, negotiations, the disciplinary matters in record of a particular student, and matters that involve location. Jeremy, second, Pam, any discussion? All in favor? Any students that are here that need your sheet signed for, if you come to any board member up here, go sign for it. Thanks for the comments.